City Council is called to order at 6:05 PM. I'm going to ask our city clerk to do the invocation and our city treasurer to do the, do the pledge of allegiance, if you guys want to switch it around there, whatever you prefer. If I did that last time, maybe we should switch it around. The city treasurer, the invocation, please.
Please bow your heads. We come together today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful conversation, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of our community. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Oh wow, it looks like we're gonna be having a quick meeting today. American Red Cross?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I ask Mr. Kent Takata and the group of the American Red Cross Executive Director, come to the podium, please? Welcome to the city of Hawthorne. You know, Ken and I go a long way. He used to be a teacher at the Eucalyptus School when I was on the school board. He used to be one of the leadership for the union. We fought a good fight to protect the union's rights, so thank you for being here. And thank you for your volunteerism, you know, after you retired, right? So, this is a long proclamation, so I'm not gonna be read all of it, but I'm gonna just read a few of them, okay? So, I'm gonna start, that said, "March is a Red Cross month. Special time to recognize and thank the Red Cross and donors who give their time and resources to help the community members. We dedicate the month of March to all of those who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergency. Our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on volunteers and the generosity of the public to perform its mission." So, you know, the chap, I'm gonna read a little bit about here because the American Red Cross feeds and provides emotional support to victims of disaster, supplies about forty percent of the nation's blood, teaching skills that save life, provide international humanitarian aid, and support military members and their families in. So, the Red Cross has a long history of helping our needy neighbors. The Greater Long Beach and the South Bay Chapter assist with the hundred seventy-seven local disaster, serving four hundred fifty-seven clients, including a hundred and three children, in the past year alone, and helped save life through our home fire campaign. Last year, our local chapter works with community partners to install three hundred fifty-nine smoke alarms and educate four hundred sixty-eight people. And therefore, you know, the city of Hawthorne takes a great pleasure in offering a firm recognition and acknowledgement of the American Red Cross, whose century-long legacy of spreading positive around the globe and inspire all of us, especially in South Bay and Long Beach. So, this day of twenty-sixth of March, twenty-four, signed by the mayor, the mayor, Pro Tem, council member Alex Montero, council member David Patterson, and councilwoman Kat, Katrina Manning. So, when you got there, you can read all about all the good things we put in with you, okay? So, if you wanna say anything, so welcome.
Well, thank you so much. My name is Amy Papa Georgis. I'm the executive director of the American Red Cross Greater Long Beach and South Bay Chapter, and our chapter is very proud to serve not only the city of Hawthorne, but twenty-nine other cities and municipalities, including the port of Long Beach, the port of LA, and Catalina Island. So, we just appreciate you inviting us to be here this evening to say thank you to the mayor, to the city council. Every time that I've reached out with an update regarding something that's going on in our community, you've always been very responsive, and that partnership is so important to us. So, thank you. I just wanted to say, we really appreciate your partnership very much and all that you've done for us as an organization in helping us to further our mission. So, Ken, would you like to say a couple of words?
Good evening. Well, I'd like to thank city council, Mr. Montero, for initiating this. We're hoping to strengthen our ties with the city of Hawthorne. All that the Red Cross does, we're hoping to continue to strengthen everything in your city for emergency preparedness. We're hoping to find emergency shelters. We're hoping to do some disaster preparedness in the schools. We're just, we're just very thankful that you all are here with open arms to us. We're trying to build our relationships with all these different cities throughout the South Bay and Long Beach, and so Hawthorne is high on our list. I told them I would become the community volunteer leader for the American Red Cross because I grew up in Hawthorne. You know, I went through school all, all K through twelve, Hawthorne High, Ramona School, what used to be Hawthorne Intermediate, and then, you know, I came back to teach in Hawthorne for thirty-one years. So, you know, have a lot, thank you. But, so I have a lot of ties to Hawthorne. Actually, my mother still lives here in Hawthorne. She just turned ninety-three.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, they've been, my mother and father have lived here since the early sixties. So, anyway, just thank you again. Just out of curiosity, are any of you out here blood donors? Any blood donors in the audience? Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you. You are a hero. March is Red Cross Month, so, you know, we, the nation has a very huge blood shortage right now. We're actually getting a lot of our blood from the East Coast. We're buying it from the East Coast. There's not enough donors, something like only, what is it, six percent of all people are blood donors. So, if you feel so moved, there's a big need for you. Each pint of blood can save up to three lives, depending on how they separate it. Also, if any of you are interested in, in your spare time of becoming a volunteer, we have lots of positions available. You know, we do, we do many, many things in disaster preparedness, not just blood donations like a lot of people think, but, you know, one of the things I do is I drive blood to hospitals and medical centers around, around here. I also go out on disaster calls when there's house fires and things, but there's so many things to do. So, if any of you feel moved or have some time, American Red Cross is a great place to put in some volunteer hours. Look, do you have anything you wanna say?
Thank you, Ken. I just wanna say thank you to, to the city council and to the city of Hawthorne for everything that you guys do. And the, the American Red Cross, it is a massive organization. It's got a, you know, very recognizable logo, but at its very core, it is a volunteer organization. It is a grassroots organization in the truest sense. In our territory, and as Amy mentioned, we have over twenty-seven cities that we support. In our territory, we only have three paid staff. We have over two hundred volunteers that are working all the time, literally every single day, not only delivering blood, but also providing disaster relief to the victims of home fires, or to the survivors of home fires, and other kinds of displacements that affect people, literally every single day. So, if you do feel so inclined to either donate your time, your blood, or your energy, we are, we'd be more than happy to have you. So, thank you again for your continued support, and we look forward to continuing working with you.
I brought you guys some, some Red Cross branded stuff, some t-shirts, and, and cups, and first aid kits and things, so I can, if you guys wanna take it and you can pass it around. Hey, do you mind if we take a picture?
Oh, just real quick, wanna say thank you for your contribution to the community, the American Red Cross, and you, sir, your contribution to Hawthorne specifically over the decades. And I will definitely look forward to seeing a, a blood drive here in the city of Hawthorne. So, thank you.
Thank you for being a essential member of our community in all that you do. You have some great leadership volunteers. We know that the gentleman here was the teacher at Eucalyptus, right? And Hawthorne Middle School, so it's like a long trajectory. So, you have connections in the community and your valued support for our community when in need.
All right, so.
Picture time.
Manny, picture time, or you wanna say anything?
No.
Picture time.
All right, all right.
Let me see. Madam Clerk, could we do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Manning?
Here.
Councilmember Montero?
Present.
Councilmember Patterson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Reyes English?
Mayor Vargas?
Here.
Can we please move on to the oral communications, ma'am?
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Okay. I'm going to ask Jasmine Leon Guerrero to please come up first, representing Senator Steve Bradford.
Good evening, Mayor, Honorable City Council. My name is Jasmine Leon Guerrero. I'm district representative for State Senator Stephen Bradford. Happy Women's History Month and Happy Red Cross Awareness Month. But, I'm here today to, in response to Mayor Pro Tem's comments about her concern with the Edison's proposal for the, the income graduated fixed charge rate, and her strong opposition to it. And since, since that last general council meeting, I connected with city manager and along with our legislative staff to kind of talk about the process of the Public Utilities Commission and how our office can support the city of Hawthorne. And from there, we did receive a formal letter from the city with highlighting the concerns, and the senator also sent a response, a letter of response back. And I did give a copy to the city treasurer, which she shared with all of you, but I wanted to read that into the record tonight. So, that's what I'm gonna do right now. And, okay, so, "Dear Mr. Morrison Councilmembers, thank you for your letter dated March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, regarding the California Public Utilities Commission, or CPUC, open proceeding to address the income graduated fixed rate charge, IGFC, rate design. Californians are experiencing a utility bill affordability crisis. One in five households served by the state's largest investor-owned utilities are behind on their electricity bills. As Chair of the Senate Energy Utilities and Communications Committee, this issue is immensely important to me. In fact, last month, my committee held an oversight and accountability hearing focused entirely on utility bill affordability. For background, in twenty twenty-two, the legislature passed and the governor signed AB 205, which required the CPUC or the Utilities Commission to adopt the income graduated fixed charge, allocating the cost with, quote, 'no fewer than three income thresholds among the rate, rate classes,' so that low-income customers in each baseline territory would realize a lower average residential monthly bill without making changes in usage. So, the IGFC, or the fixed charge, is not a new concept, or, or new cost or concept, but a policy that is being updated by the, the Utility Commission to reflect how the charge should be collected. Every three or four years, utilities present their GRC, or General Rate Case, to the Utilities Commission, setting forth their cost to operate and maintain the utility systems. From undertaking, after undertaking a comprehensive process to review the utilities' requested rates, the Utilities Commission determines the total amount the utility is authorized to collect, and how the costs will be allocated by customer class. The IGFC is a component of the rate schedule for each class and is used to cover the cost of building and maintaining utility infrastructure. Put simply, the amount of revenue that utilities are authorized to collect has already been determined, and a fixed charge will not increase the amount collected from customers. California has adopted a very aggressive policy to, okay, has adopted a very aggressive policy to increase the use of electricity to replace fossil fuels. A fixed charge has the potential to not only incentivize investments in electrification and reduce seasonal bill volatility, but is, but it is statutorily required to not only, I'm sorry, statutorily required to reduce utility bills for low-income customers. Nevertheless, I have, I have introduced Senate Bill 1292 this year to ensure that the legislature monitor, monitors that utility commissions work on this issue in future years by requiring the Utilities Commission to report to the legislature before adjustments can be made to the IGFC rate. Additionally, I continue to champion the need to protect our most vulnerable citizens, including authorizing legislation that provides utility assistance for low-income households as part of the Family Electric Rate Assistance Program, or the FIRA program. I share our constituents' concern regarding Southern California Edison's proposal, but it is only one of many that have been submitted. The CPUC, or the Utilities Commission, has solicited and received numerous proposals from parties on the potential rate design and structure, including from the Public Advocates Office, who represent utility customers in these types of proceedings. Currently, no proposed decision or even draft decision has been released, and the proceeding is still active. The Utilities Commission is required to authorize a fixed charge no later than July first, twenty twenty-four, with the understanding that a fixed charge would likely be phased into rates at a later date. I encourage you and every member of the council and our shared communities to engage with the commission. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to reach out to my Capitol Office at nine one six six five one four zero three five, or email my chief of staff. And again, with this and anything else, please feel free to reach out to me directly. Of course, Senate, uh, city council members, as well as the community. You all know my cellphone number, but my office number is three one zero four one two six one two zero, and I'd be happy to answer any questions there and be of service to you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Delbra Stern, Love Beyond Autism.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Delbra, third event on behalf of Love Beyond Autism. I'm just here to say thank you to my city, the city of Hawthorne. Thank you, Mayor Vargas, council members, staff, everyone that's working with us one-on-one to make this event happen. I came to the city to bring awareness to autism, and my city, they stepped forth. On April the sixth, we are having our autism awareness walk to bring awareness to people that's on the spectrum, people who have autism, Down Syndrome, and et cetera. Again, I don't want a long speech. I just wanna thank everyone for believing in us, and I'm hoping to see each and every one of you guys out on the sixth, from nine to one, to come out and help us bring awareness to the city of Hawthorne, as well to autism. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you, ma'am. Dick Hewn and Armenia Valboa, Park and Recs Commission, discussing the art show.
Good evening, Mayor Vargas and council members. We want, first of all, I want to put him on my Parks and Recreation Foundation hat and say that the golf tournament last week was great, except this first time we ever got rained on. And a few people got wet at the end of the course, but that's the first time it's ever happened to our thirty-three years of the golf tournament. We had rained before this tournament started one year, when we were in the first fifteen years, down in Marietta, at Bear Creek, but never got the rain. So, I'll switch hats to the Parks and Rec Commission now, and we'll say, we're having an art show, and we want to invite you all to attend our art show on April the eleventh at six o'clock. We have, Mr. Valboa's got all the information about who's coming and who isn't.
Good evening. We're really happy to bring back the art show that we had to stop because of the pandemic, and the Hawthorne School District is participating, the Castle is participating, and we have a, a group of children that are learning how to dance at the Memorial Center, and they are going to hopefully participate too. And we're really happy that this is happening, and we invite everybody. It's April eleventh at six PM at the Hawthorne Memorial Center. And again, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, folks. Anybody else wishing to address the council? Please form a line. Anyone else wishing to address the council, form the line. Okay, go, go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and staff. My name is John Muffletto. I am a proud citizen and resident of Hawthorne. My wife Carmen back there with me. I come before you today for two requests that I feel is affecting right here in your backyard. The first one is, I would like to see, if all possible, the installment of speed bumps down Broadway and any other major intersections, including Eucalyptus, which is where the corner of my home is, Broadway and Eucalyptus, along with Ramona, and any other affected intersections there, especially because of the many new residents that you have here with dogs and children, and needless to say, the school being right around the corner. The other thing that is affecting us very heavily, and I've, I've started a community watch, is the homelessness, as well as the, the trash and the occupancy of vehicles parked in and around our area that people are sleeping in or staying in, and it seems to be causing a problem. That being said, also with parking, I would like to propose my second request, and that is, if we could somehow possibly establish some form of parking permit, or parking tags, or something along that lines. Again, I live on the corner of Broadway and Eucalyptus, and I can't even park my car anymore around my home. So, and because of all the condominiums and things of that, that nature, and I complain about them, but they are taking up all the spaces. We have nowhere to park. If I have guests, good luck in trying to have them, you know, park there. That being said, we've also had an issue with the actual parking that you folks have recently designated for us with the lines. And to try to brief this as quickly as possible, I want to say it was maybe about six, seven, eight months ago, you folks came out and had lines drawn to designate a parking space. There is no consistency. Around my home, I have eligible seven parking spaces. All seven parking spaces measure fifteen feet, fourteen and a half feet, nineteen feet, twenty-one feet, fifteen feet, and seventeen and a half feet. I bring that up because when I parked my car in front of my home, I received a ticket today, as we speak, because my bumper was hanging over the backside of the line. There are cars that don't fit, and then in other spaces, you can park two cars in it. Doesn't make sense. So, if we could please address those two things, I would highly appreciate it. In the meantime, have a wonderful evening. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. That's, we invite all the residents of Hawthorne who have any issue with any code enforcement issue, or anybody that's out, and any unhoused or homeless individuals who might be improperly, you know, set up, just to call that in also. So, we need you to do your due diligence as well. If you have issues with the parking lines that are drawn, sir, please contact our Public Works Department, because if it's directly in front of your house, that sizing can be reassessed. Is that correct, Mr. Akbar? Yeah. That's Akbar, and please make sure you do your part by calling in things, too. And if you have, then there, that there might be a more, the problem right And if you have, then there might be more of the problem right there, but if you haven't, then that's you need to do that first. Thank you. Okay, so thank you, sir. All right, ma'am.
Yes, hi, my name is Anna Navarro, and I reside on Formona, on Imperial and Formona, and I'm here just to address the situation that we're currently living in my area. There is a hotel like a block and a half from where I live, and there have relocated individuals which don't have a home at this moment. They have used that hotel to relocate them, but the issue is that they're roaming around our area, which is kind of a little bit intimidating for us as women that we wake up at 4:00 in the morning, go to work at 5:00 and 6:00, we have to be at the bus stop waiting for our bus. So they're roaming around that area and looking at us, looking at our purse, and me as a woman, we feel intimidating, so I wish they could find a better location for these people. I know everybody have the right to have a place, a roof, and food, but there are some individuals that just they don't appreciate that there are people like you guys are trying to find help for them. So I'm here to say that if there could be anything that could be done and maybe find a new relocation for this type of people, so the people that are in our community will feel more safer. Also, not two days ago, there is a camera footage which one of the individuals went into the apartment and start trying to see if they could open up cars. That person couldn't come here today, so she could show you the footage video, but I'm here to see if maybe something could be done. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to ask you to talk to our police chief, and I think that with three incidents that are associated with that property by individuals who are housed there would be enough for us to have a case with L.A. County. So, chief, and that's been the that's been the approach with other cities. Okay, so it's not like I'm just saying anything that's out of the norm. That's our chief right there. Okay? Thank you, ma'am, for coming up here. Ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, city staff and neighbors. I'm just here to reiterate my very strong objection to the passage of ordinance number 2249, which is due for a second reading on item number five tonight. Being a child of the 60s and being not unfamiliar with cannabis products at that time, like many of my contemporaries were, and having seen the wreckage that's been done from cannabis for many, many families over all of the years, the same kind of wreckage that happens to people who get dependent upon alcohol, I think normalizing cannabis use and promoting it by making it a permitted use in public here is a mistake. And I think with the disaffected youth that are going around today that are damaging the malls and running riot all over the place, adding in another easy-access mood-altering substance will be catastrophically bad for our residents, for our youth, and for the people that have to deal with the consequences of the families falling apart that way. No amount of tax dollars is worth what will be coming when we have a number of people who are dependent on cannabis, and it's much faster and easier to happen than anybody wants to acknowledge. But go into an M.A. meeting sometime and listen to what the people there have lost because of their cannabis use, and I'm not one of them, I don't use cannabis, because I've seen too many other people and what they've lost. Please don't promote this in our city by making it appear the same as a candy bar or a bag of chips. It's not the same. Please stand up for our health and welfare here. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wishing to address the City Council? If not, I declare oral communication closed ordered at 6:34. Your consent calendar, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have two items on the consent calendar. There are items two and three for your consideration and approval. Item two, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item three, City Treasurer requests approval of the warrants for March 26, 2024 for adoption.
I move. Please vote.
Second.
I made the motion, and Councilmember Patterson made the second. Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Thank you, ma'am. The bid openings, please, item four.
Now is the time and place to declare publicly received sealed bids for Zella Davis Park Renovation Improvement Project Number 24-04. There were four bids received, all were accompanied by bidders' bonds. The prices are as follows. Martinez Landscape Company Incorporated, $1,771,946. Horizons Construction Company International Incorporated, $3,023, I'm sorry, $3,023,059. Los Angeles Engineering Incorporated, $3,280,000. Doja Incorporated, $3,02500.
I would like to make a motion to accept these bids, and they will be referred to staff for study recommendation. Please vote.
The votes are in. Voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Madam Clerk, ordinance, the next one is an ordinance. Can you please read item five?
Item five, ordinance number 2249, the second reading. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending section 17.87.050, uses prohibited, of chapter 17.87, mixed-use overlay zone, M U, to remove cannabis-related uses from the list of uses prohibited, and approving an exemption under section 15061 B 3 of SEQA for adoption.
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes. Katrina Manning voting no.
Okay, let's move on to the city manager's consent calendar, please. Item 6 through 11, Madam Clerk, I understand you're going to read this on behalf of the city manager.
Item six, receive and file the 2023 Annual General Plan Progress Report and the 2023 Annual Housing Element Progress Report. Item seven, progress payment number three and final acceptance in the amount of $184,397.80 due to Best Contracting Services Incorporated of Gardena, California, for City of Hawthorne-owned building roof rehabilitation, project number 23-06. Item eight, progress payment number two in the amount of $482,996.46 due to Classic Engineering and Construction Incorporated of Orange, California, for Hawthorne Housing Rehabilitation of City-Owned Properties 2023, project number 23-09. Item nine, First Amendment to the Consultant Agreement for Groundwater Monitoring Services, First Amendment, between the City of Hawthorne City and L. Everett and Associates Incorporated for Continued Operation of Soil Vapor Extraction System at 12601 Hawthorne Boulevard. Item 10, Agreement Between the City of Hawthorne and Aerodome for Services Related to Drone First Responder D F R Equipment and Software. Item 11, Increased Investments in One- to Five-Year Lettered Fixed Investments Through Multi-Bank Securities, M B S. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve item 6 through 11?
I make a motion.
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Thank you, ma'am. I understand you're going to be reading the city attorney's consent calendar on his behalf.
Item 12, Claim for Damages from Jacques Benoit. Recommended motion, deny the claim of Jacques Benoit. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city attorney's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve item 12?
I move. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Councilwoman Katrina Manning. Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
I will now recess the city council meeting and open the successor agency meeting. Madam Secretary, can you read item 13 from the successor agency?
Item 13, Housing Successor Agency Reports for Fiscal Year Ending 2022 to 2023. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council receive and file the City of Hawthorne Housing Successor Agency Report for Fiscal Year 2022-23.
I make a motion.
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
So that was that, right? So we're on discussion action items now, right? Okay, let's move on to item 14, Councilwoman Katrina Manning, city clerk and city treasurer salaries or compensation. I will now close the successor agency meeting and reopen the city council meeting. Thank you, Councilmember Patterson. This would have invalidated us being able to give any salaries to our city treasurer and city clerk. So your action discussion item, please.
Yes, I was thinking that for this item, I wanted to recommend that we offer $1,200 for the city clerk and the city treasurer and keep it as the as an ordinance, and I wanted to see what my fellow council members thought about this.
Okay, so what are we at as elected officials?
We're currently at $1,200 per month. In January of 2025, it'll go to $1,900 per month.
I'd like to support that. I'd like to for them, our cohorts over here to be part of that same equal. Is that the right word? Yeah.
Are you suggesting that theirs go to 1,900 in January?
I think for right now, we'll do 1,200, and then I think if we put a little thought more to it, then there's a possibility that we might. But as for right now, let's just.
Suggesting.
What is your what is your?
My my recommendation is $1,200 for both both the city treasurer and a city clerk.
Continue for immediately?
In January. When we get ours, everybody will get it at the same time.
The one ours is increasing 1,900, increases there to 1,200?
Yeah, theirs would increase to 1,200.
Okay.
That's what I'm recommending.
I'd be willing to support that, but.
My original suggestion was, I think, 12 and 1,600, I think it was. So just to make it clear, the change, my original suggestion was 1,200 for the treasurer, 1,600 for the clerk beginning in January 2025, and your new suggestion is 1,200 for the board beginning in 2025.
Yes.
Would this be immediate?
In January 2025.
Is there is there a possibility of making it immediate? Or do we have to wait till the to the? I'm not taking.
Well, there was a directive both issued by Councilwoman Patterson and Councilwoman Manning to take effect when the salary increases take effect for council members, which is will be January 1st, 2025. Now, if the other council members, Councilman Montero suggesting July, we're going to need a vote on that.
I would be, I would support July and the new fiscal year.
You made the original motion, but were you okay with that? I'm willing to support.
I just know that initially, that's what we decided on, and that's how I came up with the date, because that was the initial date that was discussed, but I'm okay with July.
Yeah, because for us, you know, the council members, we are supposed to start after the election, right? But the city clerk and the city treasurer is not a buy to that. So that's what I'm saying, since if we agree on the $1,200 for voter vote, then I'll say start July 1st.
I think we need to bring them up to up on par. There are fellow elected officials and.
Sounds like we have a consensus.
I'm okay with July.
Let's clarify this. We'll quick question, this is important. So immediate increase to 1,200, July, will they be part of the same additional increase that we have in, so it'll be continuous through the through the? Okay.
So if there is a consensus by the council members to change their salary at any point, they could do that by another amendment of the ordinance. If you wanted to take effect in July, so what I will do is I will bring back an introduction of the ordinance in the second meeting of April, then it will take effect, it will be a second reading would be a month from that date, so second meeting on May, and it would take effect 30 days from that, so it'll be right around July. I can't.
Can you reread the what we're agreeing to?
Yes, so amend the ordinance to make the salaries or compensation for the city clerk and city treasurer at the same amount of 1,200 per month to take effect on July 1st.
Compensation, because there's not a salary, trust me, that doesn't translate into a salary. So compensation. Do we have a consensus?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to the next item. Thank you. Women's History Month and Mother's Day event.
Yes, I am, myself and Mayor Pro Tim are hosting Women's History Month this Saturday, May the 30th, and I am asking March.
All right, let's let her finish. Let's let her finish.
March 30th, from 12 to 2:30 P. M., and I am asking my fellow council members, just because of the business expo, I didn't get enough time to request sponsorship, so I'm asking if my fellow council members can give me some of their stipends to accommodate the food this Saturday.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't know how much I have.
I'll give.
I think I gave mine to the clerk and treasurer at some point. Treasurer gave it back. I have no idea what I have.
Okay, and then the other thing is, is that I wanted to use some of it for Mother's Day and some of it for Women's History Month. So whatever you give, I will divide it between the two, just so you know.
So Montero will give $500 out of my stipend.
I still have to look, because I've committed mine to the homeowners groups, so I'll have to double check on that.
You have to look and see what I have, but.
Absolutely. In spirit?
Thank you.
I know you need some funds. Okay, thank you, ma'am. We have the elected officials' reports and recommendations. Ma'am, did you have something that you wanted to? Was it itemized? Did we skip it?
No.
We approved it.
Okay, do you want to talk?
Thank you.
Do you want to take the time now to just talk about it?
Sure, sure, sure.
Yeah, let's talk about it. We want to hear from you.
Well, thank you. So my request, and I want to thank you for approving the request, to transfer 5.5 million from the money market account to the investment account. So what I have been noticing and watching, I've mentioned before, is that short-term interest rates are at a nice high right now. They're trending over 5%. So the short version or the short answer to that is investing that 5 million will yield us in the next six months half a million. will yield us in the next six months, uh, half a million. Um, just based on the rates, um, and the Fed did vote to, uh, they're looking at lowering interest rates, but it's probably not gonna happen, uh, before the end of the year. So I want to take that and invest that in short-term treasuries. Right now, like I said, three and six months are yielding five percent, a little over five percent actually right now. They're at five point three percent. So it'll be nice to take some of those funds and make the city some money. Piggybacking on that, um, last meeting Felice had brought up wanting to use and break down city funds into the different ways to support many of the things going on in the city. And I thought making this money would be a good way to put money back into the general fund to support her wanting to divide up the money into the different funds to support some of the things that are going on in the city. So it's basically just a nice way to make some money and put some money back in that will cover some of the things that, you know, we're looking forward to doing in the city in the upcoming, you know, year or two. So that is the, the short version of that.
Anything additional?
Um, no, not at this time. Um, oh, yes, 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 yes. Um, I want to say I was looking forward to the women's conference Saturday, looking forward to attending. I did my registration. Um, I did want to say prayers to those affected by the current events in Boston. Um, it's very heartbreaking. I know six people are still unaccounted, Boston, Baltimore. Sorry, okay, but I noticed six people were still unaccounted for, so, you know, prayers to anyone out there affected to that. I want to say happy Easter this weekend, uh, coming up, and wishing you all a meaningful and reflective Good Friday. Um, I also contacted BMO, which is the bank that holds our money market account. Um, currently, they're offering us a three point six percent interest rate. So I have requested that they raise our interest rate to match the life rate. So it never hurts to ask, but I'm always for it. Um, and the tax deadline is April fifteenth, and that is it. Thank you all for coming, and you all have a good night.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Ms. City Clerk, please.
I want to thank everyone for coming out today, and as a reminder, uh, we offer notary services in the clerk's office. You can feel free to give a call and make an appointment, or if you pop in and you see me here, uh, feel free to come over if you need a notary. Uh, and I want to just, uh, wish everyone, uh, happy Good Friday coming up, and, uh, it's Easter this weekend as well. Happy Easter to everyone.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Katrina Manning, please.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Uh, I wanted to say thank everybody who came out to support the business Expo, job fair, and panel discussion. Um, we had a great turnout, and, uh, again, I want to say thank you so much for participating. Also, um, wanted to re-remind everybody, Women's History Month is this Saturday, March thirtieth, from twelve to two thirty, um, at the Memorial Center. Hope to see you there. Make sure you register so we can account for you. Um, because we, the, the deadline is March twenty-eighth, um, so that we can have account for food. Also, to put this on your calendar, Mother's Day brunch, it's May eleventh this year. Mother's Day brunch is May eleventh, and we're gonna have live entertainment. You do not want to miss, um, the surprises that we're gonna have for, uh, Mother's Day this year. Also, um, wanted to say happy Easter to everybody. It's come so quickly. I didn't even rec, realize that it, I mean, since the time change, everything has been going so fast, so fast. Um, also, I just want to give a big shout out to our city manager and our staff, um, for, uh, the Business Expo. I mean, the work that they put in and the support that I received was amazing, and because of them, we had an amazing event. So I just want to say thank you to the staff, um, for your tireless efforts and always showing up on Saturdays, uh, which is definitely hard because those are rest days. So thank you so much, and see you Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Alex Montero, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, again, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it, all the residents coming for the issues. Um, a long time ago, Akbar, I, I inquire about the, um, speed, speed hump on, uh, on Broadway. Yeah, because, you know, um, people fly on that street, to tell you the truth, so I agree with that gentleman. Uh, because, you know, I live right on Broadway and, and Ramona, so, and we have had some few, you know, accident over there. So I, 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 I kind of like agree with him about the speed hump, okay? So, um, I want to say, you know, thank you to the City of Carson and the City of Gardena for inviting us for the State of the City. So, uh, thank you for, it was nice to be in there to see what they're doing. Um, I want to say thank you to Jes, Jasmine, right? Uh, and, and Senator Steve Bradford for reply, um, to our concern. And just, just, just FY data, you know, in two thousand twenty-two, um, the A B two oh five was rushed into committees and signed by the governor. He doubt the legislator knew exactly what they were signing, okay? So that is where, uh, this issue is, is now is a hot potato. Uh, and some, actually, some, uh, assembly people and, uh, and is looking to maybe try to introduce, uh, another bill to repeal this bill, so it's not, it's not over, it's not done yet. But thank you for, for coming to give us the, the response for the senators. I appreciate it. Um, the other thing that, uh, I want to say, uh, thank you to, uh, Ms., um, Dan Zal uh, for bringing up the Autism Awareness Walk. So, uh, we're going to have it on April sixth from nine A M. to one P M. at the Hawthorne Memorial Park. Uh, so just come out and, and, and there is, you know, a lot of good stuff's gonna be happening there, so, uh, and it's gonna be a minimum cost to the city. Um, I just gave all of you a Hawthorne President's Council nomination form for Volunteers Appreciation Day. So if you have any volunteers that have worked last year, uh, for free, uh, you can nominate them, and then we will recognize them on Sunday, April twenty-eighth at two P M. at the Memorial Center, at the Sun Room. Uh, we will have them a certificate and some order to say thank you for their, uh, volunteerism. So, uh, this form is due on April fifth. So make sure that you, if you put the names, you deliver them to my desk or right here at the city manager's office, so, uh, so I can have the names submit for the book, and we'll create a book, okay? So April fifth, deadline to submit your nomination. Um, and I want to say thank you, Avon, and for giving us an update on the commissioners. Um, I think maybe we should stop putting some more P S As out there, advertising that we need commissioners for the City of Hawthorne, so I appreciate that. Um, just a quick reminder that, uh, this Thursday, the twenty-eighth, there will be the South Bay Cock, uh, General Assembly that starts about, uh, ten A M. in the morning in Carson Community Center. Uh, so, and is gonna be talking about, uh, artificial intelligence. Uh, so it's a good topic to, to attend, and it's always free to attend, so there's no cost associated with that. And I just want to say something about, see, some, some, uh, individual, um, understood about this, uh, overlay zone different way. We not promoting cannabis. We trying to regulate and make sure that people gonna do it on a, on a safe way, right? Because we see, I see people every day smoking in our streets, even in our parks. The marijuana, I can smell like a skunk. And, but those people are doing, are not on a safe way. So we trying to regulate and also to bring some product that is gonna be regulated and safe for the people consumption on, on their own leisure and properties, not on the street. So we trying to regulate and make sure that the product is safe, that it's gonna come through those dispensaries that we're going to do. So for, for people to come and say that we are promoting, uh, cannibuses and some other candy type of thing, that's a wrong message to give to, to our constituents, okay? So, uh, we want to make sure, because people are doing that. You know, there is dispensaries right across the street in Inglewood on the non-incorporated areas of L.A. County. They doing that every day. But the city's not taking advantage of that. We're not getting no, no sales tax, no money, no nothing. They doing it. So we have to regulate it, what's coming in and out in our city. So on that note, I have to say thank you very much, and Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you guys did it, but as you know, that, uh, Eric Chavez's mom passed away a few weeks ago. So if you could adjourn this meeting on Eric's mom's memory, I appreciate it. And also for those, uh, six missing in Baltimore, but I think now they just say, um, they think they already expired because the water's too cold for them to, to survive twenty-four hours, so. Thank you and a good night.
Councilmember Patterson.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. One of first thing to community for coming out and participating in the process, uh, making your voices heard and making sure that, uh, we have enough information, um, to make great decisions on your behalf. We have a few great events coming up. One that I don't think was mentioned yet is on Monday, April eighth, two thousand twenty-four, the Hawthorne Business Connect, uh, is having the SBA come out and speak and talk about, uh, how to look for capital and taxes incentives, um, how to market and write, how to market your business, how to write a business plan, and some other great things. Uh, I think, um, that should be very great, great information, great event. Those of you guys have a small business or a large business, right? Please come out and, and get their great information, and, you know, we want to make sure the businesses in our city thrive. Who's this for? Also, on April eighth is a, uh, eclipse. I don't know if you guys know that. So in, I think in Hawthorne, we'll see about fifty-seven percent of the eclipse. If you want to make your way to Texas, you can probably see a hundred percent of eclipse. Uh, I'm gonna go to Mexico. I'm gonna see about ninety, I think ninety-six point five percent. But, um, should be an interesting day. I think it's gonna be a long time from next time we're gonna have a opportunity to see a total eclipse. So, uh, you know, get your eclipse glasses and, and take advantage of that opportunity. Um, to the councilwoman's request for funds for her, uh, women's event, uh, I want to donate two hundred and fifty dollars for my stipend for, to go towards both events.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. And talking about our commissions, uh, we do have a number of vacancies in many, if not all of our commissions, and don't really know what to make of that. And I've heard our planning commission has not had a quorum, um, a number of times in the last year. Uh, and so I think we definitely need to, as a city, figure out a way to let people know that this opportunity exists to volunteer and, and serve the city. Uh, these are very important roles in our city. These commissions, uh, help our city to run. And specifically, when it comes to like the planning commission and the civil service commission, there's a lot of things that the city can't do, uh, without those commissions. And so, uh, anybody out there that's watching this meeting, definitely want to encourage you to consider, uh, putting in an application and, um, seeking, you know, a position in one of our commissions. We definitely need your, your volunteerism, and we definitely need your, your contribution to our city. And, you know, Mr. City Manager, any ideas we can kind of brainstorm on kind of just getting the word out and educating people that these opportunities exist, and hopefully, hopefully we get some more, uh, applications. Let's see, I keep some notes on my phone, so give me a second, make sure. Saying there's no go-bags.
Well, somebody's already violating that coming up.
And I also would like for us to, um, host a, an expungement clinic in the City of Hawthorne. Maybe we can partner up with a nonprofit in our city, um, that serves, uh, you know, that population. Um, you know, I don't know, we can reach out to some neighboring cities that have done this, uh, over the last year, and I think it'd be a really great thing for the City of Hawthorne to do. And so, you know, I don't know, Mr. City Attorney might have some ideas, City Manager maybe might have some, some ideas, just, you know, talk offline, kind of figure it out. But, um, hope everybody have a great weekend. Thanks for coming out. See you guys soon.
Okay, um, should we just ignore Councilwoman Manning, or should we give her a chance, or what do you guys say? Go ahead.
Easter. Thank you, mayor. Um, I just forgot to give a directive, um, to this.
This is just go-bags, not directives.
City manager, can you please give me an update on the urgent care facility? Thank you.
That was it? Okay, thank you, ma'am. I have a series of things, ma'am. There's been a lot of stuff happening, uh, these last few, uh, these couple of weeks, these last few weeks. Um, we do have a mixer for those members of the CERT, uh, CERT Association. Uh, Council of Mayor Pro Tem English was supposed to, uh, wasn't able to make it today, but we just want to let you know that for all those involved with CERT, the Hawthorne CERT is having a team mixer on Tuesday, April second, uh, from five thirty to seven thirty at the Memorial Center in the Venus Room. So it's an opportunity for all those who have taken the class, current recently, or, um, in, in the past to come and join and just talk to and mix with all those people who are, uh, certif, certified CERT members, okay? Tuesday, April second, from five thirty to seven thirty in the Memorial Center. Okay, so try to make it out to that. There were, there have been a lot of things, guys. So Cesar Chavez Day is, uh, being honored this coming Monday, so City Hall will be closed. So if you had any business you wanted to, uh, tend to, uh, make sure you come in on Tuesday. Yes, that's Cesar Chavez, the Mexican-American guy. So, uh, Cesar Chavez Day, this coming Monday. Okay, so we're gonna be closed. Um, there was com, comments on the cannabis. Um, that ship has sailed, uh, a long time ago, I hate to say, for those people who are still trying to contest it. Um, but the real issue is not here in your city council. The real city is, the real issue is the statewide, uh, support for it um, in the election that took place statewide. I think if you have an issue, then vote out your Congress, vote out your assembly members, vote out your state senators, vote out your, uh, governors, but I think, uh, we're just following the mandate that's been issued to us. I attended the State of the City, uh, for the City of Carson, uh, which was a wonderful affair, very grand, very elegant. And we got to hear what our counterparts in the City of Carson are doing. So, uh, we, I want to congratulate Mayor Lula Davis Holmes on a great presentation and the staff over there, uh, led by former, uh, City of Hawthorne employee, Dave Roberts. So we want to congratulate them all. And then also, I attended the State of the City in Gardena, uh, which was a grand affair as well. And we got to see what my counterpart, Mayor Tasha Serta, is doing over there in the City of Gardena. I was joined by our city, uh, manager, Vaughn Norris, and by Councilmember David Patterson, which was at both of those events, right? And he was there, and staff mem, we had staff members attend at the City of Hawthorne, staff members attending, and the City of, of, uh, and the city clerk was there too, at the Carson one, so, and we had staff members attending Carson's as well. So we got to see where we're at, and I, and Councilwoman Montero, I'm sorry. And I think we can come away, you know, we, we appreciate and we honor our fellow, uh, South Bay cities, but we, we come, we came back and say, yeah, we're in a good place, man. So we could compare ourselves, oh, we're really in a good place, right, Mr. City Manager? A lot better than, you know, just, we, what could you say about that?
Absolutely, we're the best city in the South Bay.
That's it, man. Well, let's give it up for Hawthorne. That's right. Okay. Hopefully nobody here snitches to my colleagues over there that we said this. No, but yeah, we really came back really excited about what we're doing. So, um, stay tuned for our State of the City coming up soon. So stay tuned for our State of the City coming up soon. Today in the morning, I presented the state of real estate for the city of Hawthorne at the South Bay Association of Realtors Breakfast Mixer. I was joined by our city manager, Vaughn Norris, councilmember David Patterson, and Greg McLean from our planning department, and by Mayor Emeritus, Guy Hawker, who was there with us. So we just talked about how, you know, where we are, where we are at as a city, you know, home values are increasing consistently, our demographics is slightly changing. But I wanted to let the residents know that even though we were speaking to a group of realtors, their job is to sell homes. The higher the sale of a home, the better for them. But I stated to the group, and I needed to be bold about this, is that we do not want to lose some of our longstanding families that we have here in the city of Hawthorne because prices keep going and going and going. So I just stated, and I hope my councilmember colleague support, support this, the idea is that we need to make sure we keep a level of affordable housing here for the people who already live there so we can, we don't want to lose anybody that's essential and has been longstanding here in the community. So I'm aware of that. I think the city council is aware of that too. The bunny breakfast took place this past Saturday. We had a large turnout. I was really impressed and I was really happy. It was supposed to be outside like we traditionally have, but it rained. So I want to congratulate staff not only for being able to bring the event inside, the logistics and change it around and bring it inside, but, you know, successful, successful for their outreach to begin with, which everybody who would have been outside came inside and it was a grand big affair. There was lots of people there. I was very pleased and I was very happy. It was a warm moment for me in my heart as I left that one. But the North Hawthorne Community Association also had an Easter egg hunt, and I know that one of my councilmember colleagues supported them, and it was a very successful event. I think they had like about three or four different egg hunt rounds, right? They laid it all out and hide them all over the place, and I think at least three times they had the kids go out and grab the little eggs, the plastic eggs. And so that was fun. The Easter bunny was hopping around and I got to say hi to them. So also, I want to let you guys know that I attended the Islamic Center of Hawthorne's Interfaith Meeting this past Saturday as well. They broke fast and I guess they celebrated with by eating us. It's just a very, I mean, we, as a Catholic, I celebrate Lent and there's certain things that I give up. And I want to commend the Muslims for, you know, fasting and the level of sacrifice that they also, what they give up is not eating or drinking anything from a certain amount of, from, from the morning till the evening. There's none of that. And you're supposed to eat modest amounts in the morning, just a small token, maybe a date or something small, and then light a meal at the end of the day to keep you going or your body's not gonna function. But that type of sacrifice and the reasons why that's done, I really learned a lot by hearing the Imam explain that to us. Commissioner Erminia Valboa and her mom were there too, and Chief Tomatani was there as well. So we got to say hello on behalf of the city to them, right, Chief? So it was really good and it really felt really nice to be welcomed so warmly by the community there. So we, we reached the end of our meeting, and as you can see, it's 7:15. Wow! I guess we need to repeat this, whatever this recipe is to, you know, be able to get through this meeting so quickly. I don't know what the, we'll try to figure out, Mr. City Manager. Maybe we could duplicate this in the future. So, I know. But what I do want to do is end the meeting in memory of the people who have passed because once we come out, we just report and we go home. Many of you guys are not gonna stay around for when we do that. So two of our employees' parents died. First, Eric Chavez down in Cable, his mother passed, and we want to close out the, this part of the meeting on his mother's behalf. And Diana from the city clerk's office, her father also passed. So we really wanted to just think about them. We already said our prayers for the six missing over there in Boston, but we want to specifically focus on our employees' parents in Boston and Baltimore. Yeah. Okay, you get the points on that one.
Am I reading item 16 into the record first?
So let's just have a moment aside for both their parents. May they both rest in peace.
Item 16, conference with the legal counsel. Existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 D1. Name of case, Herman Roberson versus City of Hawthorne, Natah. U.S. District Court Case Number 219 CV 06913 DMG JPR.
Is anybody wishing to speak on this item? If not, I am going to recess the city council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda at 7:16 PM.